Hello, 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 everybody. Think I am live, I am live, I'm live, I believe so. So, welcome to a special Saturday night session where I am coming on to finish out all readings from the earlier session. I only got to donations in the previous session and was shy a few donations too. So, and I, so I didn't do any YouTube of the monthly readings, I don't think. It's been a, a long day, so I, I don't think I did. So, in this session, I'm only completing those from the earlier session. You'll see there's no chat, I'm not taking any new questions, but I will be back tomorrow morning, Friday, not Friday. It's a, not Friday already again, it's Sunday morning at 11 a.m. is when I shall return. And so, if you'd like to, you can stop by then as well. So, for this one, we're gonna start off with donations, I've got three, we got Moonlight. Five, you'll be first, and then Nelia Maderos, you'll be second. I also gonna chunk on, you had a free reading request and I'll just stick that on the end of that. So, you can just find it really easy, as per usual. And then Maria P., you'll be up after that. And then I'll jump to my YouTube channel, members, I just have two for free readings, Just Blessings and Faith in Love. And then I only had two other free readings in the session, I know I was on for five hours today. So, a lot of people probably got their messages to this morning. So, I just have Morning and then XO, and then that's it for this evening. So, we're gonna jump in, we're gonna continue to use this wonderful, The Witch of the Forests Tarot Magic Deck. And so, we'll jump in here. So, first up, like I said, is Moonlight, so Moonlight, thank you for your multiple donations. And thank you for this question, so. You wanted to know what, if anything, will happen in your love life in February? You believe in life after love, okay, share. And then with or without, you know, so hit me with the truth. All right, let's take a look here. See what love looks like for February. Anything in love for February? What else? They want those, and they want those, and that one too, okay. So, let's see. Kind of just all piled up, mainly, we'll just do it that way. Bottom of the deck, you do have the Seven of Swords, which is about kind of evaluating and approach. So, this is kind of like a, more so a, you know, an energy that's like, questioning beliefs that were formed around you, or mistrust that you have on, liars, liars, and deception, and, and things like that. And so, I feel like they're telling you that that is a piece of, of what is going to be happening there. And oh my gosh, we are not live here, I'm so sorry, let me go public here. I just wonder if I didn't get an email yet, and that makes total sense, so. There we go. That should activate things. So, so, so sorry if, there it is, now it says I'm live. It's a little setting that I skipped on by, but anyway. So, sorry about that, but that is, it's about correcting, there you go, see, it's all makes sense. It's about correcting a setting that you have around distrust, around because of other people. And, and I get it, I, I had a distrust of men because of my early life. That goes back to, oddly enough, walking into a house when I was in first grade alone. My brother was supposed to be with me, but I was a latch, we were latchkey children back in those days. And, which means we had a key to get in the back door, and we were only home not too long. But my older brother, who was three years older, was supposed to be with me, but he went to play with friends. So, first time I walked in the house all alone with no one there, freaked me out. Then it built into mistrust of father, mistrust of brother, and, and men in general. And it's about getting to the root of the mistrust and the lies and, and things is an important part of your journey in February. Yay, right? That's underlying energy, see what else we have here? Well, you know, you have the King of Wands here in the Page of Pentacles. This does talk about energy of, you know, you hold the power, you can step forward, you can meet people. And so, as far as love life, I feel like there's opportunities, you know, enhanced opportunities of meeting different people with that too. So, I feel like it's, you know, it's possible here with this King of Wands, but you hold the Wand of Possibility. It's whether you do that or not, and I feel like it's important for you to question those thoughts, but then be able to move forward, right? Yep, Knight of Wands, so there is possibilities of fast movement, fast passion. Yeah, but it's about stepping beyond here again, after the Seven of Swords comes the Eight of Swords, releasing and movement from those thoughts and those beliefs and those mindsets that keep you blinded and bound and trapped. Cause I feel like you can have a lot of different experiences around love, it doesn't mean that we have to go sleep with everyone, right? But it's like, we can have a lot of different experiences and, you know, not that it would be speed dating, you know how they have the speed dating where you go sit down and, you know, didn't get to learn a lot of people, but I feel like you have these possibilities to really put yourself in places where you get to meet a lot of different people and just be comfortable with that. With not putting intention, not mistrust, or, you know, analyzing, but it's like really looking in and seeing what you appreciate in each person. I feel like that, that is this kind of thing, yeah, cause the other Two of Cups, so this is telling me, you do have the possibility in February of making some great relationships and friendships and connections. Doesn't mean that it will lead to love, like get a drop of a hat, but I feel like this is all about getting to know a lot of different people and seeing, practicing, having appreciation for who they are, yeah. And again, like the King of Wands, you have the Page of Wands. It is about your energy and about you initiating and doing it. It's like, they're not gonna just come to you, this is about you going into places to mingle with people, talk with people, get, excuse me, hiccup, scary, I know, scary, right? No, but it's getting to know, getting to know people, right? And yeah, and allowing with the Seven of Pentacles, allowing things just to unfold as it does and not needing a plan. I feel like it's a very go with the flow kind of flow month with all of this here. And even now, the Two of Pentacles, which is about balance, but there is this energy here of duality and, and, you know, look, it's actually like eyeglasses, right? Looking with stars in your eyes at what, what people offer here, but I feel like there's, you, you meet two significant people, and it doesn't mean it has to be romantic, but I just feel in February, you do have this opportunity to, to do that. And in, in doing that practice of, okay, I'm not looking at a list and seeing are they, check, 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 you're just going, screw the list, throw it out. And I'm just gonna get to know people, and I'm gonna focus on what I appreciate about people. Not judge them for who they're not being on my list, right? It's like, the list is gone and I'm going with the flow, and I like that for you for February. It's just like, yeah, I'm just gonna go hang out, see what's going on and meet people and just see what happens. I'm not, not gonna have any intentions, I just wanna get to meet people and understand people and have an appreciation for who people are. I like that, it just feels like a very good month to do that for you. Right, so, you have possibilities, so there you go. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Moonlight, so many blessings to you. Right, and then Nelia Maderos, first, thank you for your donation, we'll do your donation reading first, as I said. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your multiple donations. I wanna know what does Spirit think of you joining any meetup groups? And if I were to, what experiences would you have, the good, the bad, and the ugly? General on that, please, you're so funny. That's right, yes. We'll see here. So, what is coming in here for that? Okay, so what do they think about meetup groups? What kind of energy would you have around it? And what experience would you have here? Okay, and just anything else on that, alright. Alright, well, in the bottom of the deck, you do have the Knight of Cups. And part of our quest for the Ace of Cups, for our self-love, is interacting with other people. You know, it's part of it, every relationship we have, friends, family, coworkers, lovers, everything is a reflection of our self-love. Cause we see our love, our self-love reflected back to us and whenever we interact with everyone. And so, it is a good, a good awareness that can come from all that. So, I feel like that is supportive here, that's the bottom of the deck. So, I feel like they're like, yeah, you know, getting out and mingling with people is a wonderful way to, like we were just talking about with Moonlight, to really connect with people and get to, and like we're saying with Moonlight is, leave our little list, our judgy list at home of who they're supposed to be, and just look at appreciating what you love about all the people that you interact with, not, oh, they're that, or they're this, or they don't do this, or they don't do that. It's like, look what they do in positive things, you know? Wow, look at that, and that, and that, and it's like learning this appreciation, and I like that. See what else they want you to know here? Yeah, I like this, yeah. You're gonna, this is gonna crack you up, so the Moon card here is about, you know, howling at the moon with your pack, right? But there is a lot of things that you learn about yourself that bubble up when you interact with all these different individuals. Cause they all bring different perspectives and they all bring different energies. And it allows you to learn about yourself, that it bubbles up. And when we're talking about, you know, what about meetup groups, and it's like death to the hermit. So, yeah, ending hermitude, get out among people, is very supported with those cards. Three Major Arcana, by the way. But I like that. What kind of experiences would you have? Knight of Swords, you definitely would learn a lot and gain a lot of clarity, and again, another quest. You've got the Knight of Cups, now you have the Knight of Swords. So, it is movement of communication and a lot of clarity that comes in with all of those. Any of the Three of Wands, I feel like you will go to a variety of different meetup groups, and some of them with new knowledge will have you take a different path in some ways. So, maybe you don't go back to, some, you'll continue to go and you meet people who are also part of other meetup groups and you join them. And so, you have like these different niches of interests and with different people. And you start recognizing that some people are in both of them, and you're like, wow, we have stuff in common. So, you can find some great friends, but you also can find something else. Yeah, and the Six of Swords, leaving behind old ways of thinking, moving to new ways of thinking, moving from choppy waters to calmer waters. Overall, it feels like there's mainly, you know, very evolving and learning experiences that you have through this. And I really like that because you have that evolution and, and learning and things, you're learning about yourself and you're learning about others too. So, I like that. And then the general on that, let's see what else we have here. Yeah, I love this, so you do have the Judgment card, which is your higher self, calling you to something, to see things from a higher perspective. And so, I do feel like this nudge, this draw that you have is from Spirit going, this would be good for you. And so, this draw of your heart is supported, and then the Strength card too, with your higher self, holding on to your lion, human self here. This is great energy, it's about getting out there and, and even possibly helping lead a meetup group, or creating your own even, with this natural leadership strength too. But I feel like getting to know and being part of some others allows you to possibly even create your own in the future. So, I like that for you, so very supportive, I, I, I feel like this is good for you, so. Definitely follow your heart, where, to which ones that you feel drawn to. Cause your heart is leading the way, your joy is leading the way, right? Alright, so that's what they have for that one, Nelia. And then for your free reading, you were wondering, does your director use work funds for her own personal gains? Just curious. Uh-oh. Alright, so let's see what Spirit wants you to know about it. Does she use work funds for her own personal gains? Nope, they didn't want that one, they want this one here. I don't feel so with the, the Eight of Wands, and you got two eights here, which is very flowing energy. Got the Major Arcana Eight of the Strength card. This Leo and, and energy, and, and it's about being seen and movement of energy. And I, I don't feel, I feel like it's, the only thing that, they don't use work funds, but I feel like they do allow their visibility, is the word, is the energy I was feeling here. The visibility of being a leader to help them have other opportunities, like in the community and things. So, it doesn't, it's not funds that they're using it for, but they're kind of notoriety. Like they're noticed that they're able to be on, and, and get invited to things and attend things, be included in things that they, but more community related kind of stuff, not so much financial benefit per se. Not that they, you know, they might get some benefits of being on a board somewhere because of their position. They're offered, you know, to be on a board of, in a community or something, and because of that, they get a little reward or access to things, but I don't feel like it's anything spooky and irresponsible or, you know, unlawful, anything like that. So, yeah, nothing there, so that's what they have for you, Nelia, so many blessings to you. Alright, and then the last of our donations is Maria P. So, Maria, thank you for your additional donation. Sorry, we only got to one in the other session, but let's take a look here, you wanna know, does David know about you and Walter? Okay, alright. Okay. And will David ever try to talk to you? Any particular thought that Walter thinks of you a lot? Okay, whoa. PG, I might have to send you an email if it's something else, I'm just kidding. And then what is it that Walter wants to do to make your relationship step higher? Let's take a look here. Okay, so we got those, let's see here. So, does David know about you and Walter? You know, you got the Four of Wands here, which is about joy and celebration. And this energy would be a positive thing, cause it's stable energy. But I'm getting this, I was just trying to step into this energy because I'm like, it's like ignorance is bliss, and I don't feel like they do, and I don't feel like they care. I, I feel like they're not interested in finding gossip or rumors or information out. They're, they're, they're just like ignorance is bliss, I'm just enjoying my life. And I feel like that's what they're kind of zeroed in on. And will they ever try to talk to you? No, and I feel like with the Five of Pentacles, this is the feeling of abandonment, being left behind, being left out in the cold. Feelings of lack, and I feel like the experiences maybe that you guys had together brought that kind of feeling about, and they're like, I don't wanna feel that way again. And so, now I don't need to, you know, again, ignorance is bliss, I just wanna focus in on me. And so, with that energy, I don't feel like they're gonna attempt to just reach out, cause they're like, oh, I'm, I'm good and we're good, I don't wanna just, don't wanna go backwards, I wanna continue moving forwards. You know, kind of energy that's there. And then any particular thought, Walter thinks of you a lot, let's take, we got four cards, oh my gosh. So, you got the Lovers card, which is a, a great energy of important relationship, so I love that. And they have the Ace of Cups, which is happiness and overflowing emotion. We also have the, oops, upside down. The Seven of Pentacles, which is about going with the flow and patience and not rushing. And, and the Five of Swords, you know, does represent, you know, the internal struggle between their head and their heart, right? Their heart enjoys and everything, their head, you guys kinda have this in common, will jump into those expectations and not wanting the expectations, wanting to take things slow, not wanting to have, like, there has to be, you know, this is where it's going, this is what's happening, blah, 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 they're like, I just wanna go with the flow. I just wanna let it grow organically without rushing it, without having to, you know, have, this is my intention. What, what kind of relationship are we in? What about, no definition, no intention, none of that. Let's just let it unflow, and, and that's what the freedom that comes in with it. It's not like they want freedom because they wanna go everywhere else. They just don't like feeling boxed in, they had that before, they don't wanna be a caged animal. They wanna be a lion running through the jungle with a lioness, you know, you by their side. Not being a zoo in a caged environment, you know, kind of thing, if that makes sense. Too funny. And then, what is it that Walter wants to do to make your relationship higher? You got four cards for this too. So, you got the Hierophant. Let's see what else we have here. Because the Hierophant is about being drawn, seeing things from a higher perspective. And, and again, getting out of the small teach roots of fear and really seeing things from this higher perspective. Getting out of our heads and staying in our heart. The Page of Cups has this higher love, which is what we're talking about, you know, make the love higher and, and have the love be something bigger. And you know, the feeling of the energy that I'm stepping in with them right now is like feeling self-love and self-love, that we both have self-love and that we don't need each other, but we wanna be with each other. And again, it comes, comes back to this neediness and this expectations and the roles. He's just like, I don't want to feel like I'm in a needy relationship because then it feels burdened, and he doesn't want that. And I feel like he wants to take it to the next level by continuing to still allow this flow together and this growth together. And that's really how love happens, the less we have of lower vibrational expectations, self-love, self-worth, all of that, it just grows. And because when you're confident in who you are, you're not afraid people are gonna cheat on you or not do something, or we get caught in all our fears, because we're like, I'll be fine with or without you. I like being with you and I would like to go on adventures together. But if you think you need something else, then you go ahead, I'll be fine. I'm gonna go find someone else to have an adventure with, and that's fine, you know? But it's that kind of confidence that you can be together, and then there's not that accusations that come. Cause he's had all that before and he's just like, I just don't, I don't need that, right? I like that. And you have the Six of Cups. This is past life connection energy, but could be children too. I don't know if you are with child still. But there is this Six of Cups, which is about, you know, children, child energy and play. You know, instead of it feeling like you're working, it's about having playdates with inner children, right? It's like going to have fun, focusing on enjoying life and not being serious, but fun and enjoying. You know, that's what life is, is about and for, right? So, I feel like that's a big piece of some of the things they wanna do, just to allow it to grow and continue to, to raise, is to stay out of seriousness and worry and fear and need and definition and restriction. And it's about unconditional love, enjoying laughter and peace and adventure, right? And that's what grows a relationship instead of sucks the life out of it, right? Cause we start off on these wonderful adventures, and then we try to fit it into the box of relationship. And we have to crunch stuff and break stuff off to make it fit in the box. And then, then the relationship feels broken, and so the more we just let it be box-free and, and let it fly, it gets bigger, right? So, hopefully that makes sense, that's what they have for you, Maria though. So, thank you again for your multiple donations, I appreciate that. Alright. And then next, we've got Just Blessings for your free reading. I wanna know what is Scorpio's, the Scorp's intentions? Sting, sting, no, let's take a look here. Alright, wow, look, two threes. So, three, three, lot of creativity energy that comes in here. And the Three of Pentacles, they've got a lot of energy of being true to their authentic self, not trying to be anything for anyone. But being true to them, and the Three of Cups. The Three of Cups, I just don't, I just feel like there's this energy of I'm going to be and, and Three of Cups energy. I don't know, it can be a bit hidden and mysterious, but the Three of Cups can be like three, three-party. Like they're in the middle and they've got two people that they're interested in. And I don't feel like with that, I don't necessarily feel here that they would want to see two people at the same time, but I kind of feel like their intentions are to get to know two people and, and the one that they're, I just feel like they're undecided, they kinda go back and forth between two people that they're interested in. But they're trying not to get too serious, but they're also, because they don't like hurting people. They don't like stinging them with their little scorpion tail. But they want to make sure that they're making a choice for someone that is compatible with their energy and that they align with them. And, and they're like, wow, I have interest in two, and I really, I like this and this and this about you, and I like this and this and this about them. And you're so different, I feel, it's like brunette and blonde, you know, the difference, it's like so different. And they're trying to see which one really, really clicks and with their energy. And so, I feel like they're taking time to get to know each other to make that decision. So, I know you're like, well, if you don't realize it right off the bat, then you're stupid anyway, I don't wanna be with you. I'm just kidding, but, but interesting, so that's the kind of energy that's coming in, Just Blessing, so. Which is, you know, I get it, if I was attracted to two people, I would be like, I need Which is, you know, I get it. If I was attracted to two people, I would be like, I need to make a decision. I don't wanna. One of them to get attached to me or me to get attached to both. And then what am I gonna do, right? Unless you're gonna have a, what do they call that? A uh. What is it when you have three people in a relationship, a th- a th- throuple? You're like, uh, no, thank you. Alright, but unless you do, you know, I'm just saying, but you know, so there you go. That's what they have for you right now, just blessings. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then faith and love. Hello, hello. So does C love you romantically? And does he want you in his life? Alright, so does C love you romantically? Boom. And then does he want you? In his life. Alright, does he love you romantically? You know, the four of cups is an interesting card because it was like. It's, cause it's a. The three cups down here are the normal type of relationships we have and the self-love. Is what brings us fulfillment, right? So I feel like they have the regular human love, but. But there is this lack of contentment in the type of relationships that they've had before. So I just feel like there's this. Yeah, they love you romantically. They have that. You know, conditional human love, but they feel like something's empty and it's that. Nudge from their higher self to turn inward for their higher self-love, right? And do they want you in their life, huh? You know? We got the nine of pentacles, which is this hermity energy of wanting to be alone. And I don't know, I just feel like with this energy here. And this isn't about you specifically, right? They're just wanting to. I I feel like they're going through this with that four of cups. It's like. They thought they had emotional stability and they thought, yeah, this, this is gonna be fulfilling. And then they're like, why isn't it fulfilling me? Why is nothing in my life fulfilling me? All these things I've been taught, job, education. My body, my bank accounts, the the possessions, the relationships with people of all kinds, friends, family, lovers, whatever. Why am I not feeling full? And it's because. Fullness comes in here, not out there. And I feel like they're in this state of. Just unfulfillment of life and it's um just got him in this. I don't know what's going on. What is it gonna take for me to feel fulfilled? And it's. It's turning inward and upward, but I feel like they're still in that kind of confused state. Uh, and that's why they're kind of caving and hermiting and wanting to be away. Cause the nine of pentacles, nine is the hermit's number, pentacles is the outside world. That's where I'm getting that energy of wanting to be alone. And figure all this stuff out. So it's not, you know, it's got the human emotion feelings. For you, but he's had the emotion feelings for others and he just feels discontent. Cause it's, it's not about you. You can't make him happy. He has to find that happiness in here, but he just feels unhappy about life. And it's the awakening. This is what happens. We we become dissatisfied enough with the outside world. We turn inward and upward. Find and develop our self-love and connection, then we fill up and overflow and then. The stuff of the outside world, instead of feeling lacking and falling short, becomes feeling uh above and beyond extra. So that's what's going on right now and and I like that. You mean, we can turn that. This reflection of this question and turn it on you. This is what your spirit guides are doing to you. But it's great reflection because when we're asking questions about other people for us, we can ask the same of us for us, right? So does C love you? Do you love you? And you can sit with that and go, how do I know that's true? And then do I want me in my life? Or am I out there defining myself by others, right? Do I want my higher self in my life? Do I wanna define myself this way? Then why are we cheating on our higher self with other people? Looking for our worth in other people instead of letting our higher self define my worth, right? That's what I discovered when I had partners who were cheating on me. And I was like. You know, after doing reflection, that's what spirit goes, what did you learn? I go, oh, men are bastards. Like, no, 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 that's not it. Oh, okay. And it's like, well, you know, what about cheating? I'm like, well, I was faithful to them. Um, and they're like, but if it's a mirror, I go, how was I cheating on them? Like, well, maybe you weren't cheating on them. Maybe you were, you know, where are you getting your self-worth from? And I'm like. But you then they're like, where are you supposed to get self-worth from? And I'm like, huh? And like, why are you saying I was cheating on myself with them? And they're like, think about it. And it's like. Wow, I was, cause I wasn't looking for my self-definition. I was defining myself by their actions and. Doing everything I can to, you know, have them think something of me. When I'm like, I don't need that. I'm cheating on myself. So anyway, but that's what they have for you, faith and love. Hopefully that makes sense. So many blessings. Alright. And then my last two free readings, we've got morning up first. So morning. You like a general for next week? Let's see what spirit has here for you. Alright, a general for next week. Well, you got the hermit card here, which is about this invitation, the importance. Of spending time to yourself, connecting with spirit. Allowing them to be this guide, you know, this little lantern, this little glow here. Shedding some light on your life here. And we've got the page of cups and the lovers card, which is all about lovers card in this case is about. One, it's about emotional choice, but it's about the importance of your relationship with your higher self. Because um it is about relationships, but it doesn't have to necessarily be lovers or. Family or friends or whatever. It's the relationship to the upper realm and. Specifically, I feel like it's towards your higher self because. The star and the star card is your higher self. And then the page of cups that the uh chalice that they're holding. Represents you um becoming the chalice and letting. That love from above, your higher self is like the spigot. That brings in all that love from the upper realms and they can bring that into you to help you fill up and overflow like that is. Um, for that here and. So I feel like the the general for next week is like. The answer to everything that's going in your life is is turning inward and upward and connecting to that love because you get. Answers from a higher place. You get emotions from a higher place. You get energy from a higher place and it spills out to your physical world and it brings. Significant change and significant um yeah, change to your world because. You don't see the world as it is, you see the world as you are. And as that changes you on the inside, you see the world change around you too. And I feel like it's an important time here to do that. There's a lot of energy astrologically that's supporting all of that internal. Reflection and growth too. So it's an important time to really turn inward and upward. And I feel like next week it's. Really important to try to do like a daily practice, even if it's like fifteen minutes. Connecting and what messages do you have for me? Let me journal. If you have any kind of oracle cards or, you know. Anything you can do to get messages from spirit, it's important to connect every day this next week, alright? And that's what they have for you morning. So many blessings to you. And then lastly, but not leastly, we've got XO. Say, hey, hello Danielle. So you're wondering if you made a shift away from your situation. Um, or if there's a path forward with this company, cause you're considering entrepreneurship. Entre, I know it's uh entrepreneur. Entrepreneur, let's take a look here. So tell us about the energies around staying where you're at. Okay, and then the energies of entrepreneurship. Cause they don't, they don't have an opinion. They don't have shoulds, whatever. They just know different choices bring different experiences, different energies. And so they're like, well, let's just tell you the energies around them and you can decide what feels best for you, right? So if you stay with the current company, yeah, I don't feel like there's a path forward. The five of pentacles is. Lack and left behind, left in the cold, abandoned kind of energy there. So it doesn't feel like there's a successful path forward there. Um, entrepreneurship, you got the nine of wands and the nine of wands. You know, has this energy of blockades, but you have the power if you'll take the ace of wands. And step into your power. You can get through this blockade in entrepreneurship and move forward. Yeah, and and what I mean by that is stepping into your powers, realizing whatever you focus on with your ace of wands. Is what grows and expands. And so if we have beliefs in lack, if we have beliefs and it's tough, it's hard, it's hard to do. Um, or you know, we fear or we're want, we have a lot of want and need. We push things away from us. But when we go about life with that magic one and focus on gratitude and unconditional love and joy and that it. Aligns our energy to receive and have things come in. So it's very important. To understand your why, understand your energy around wanting to be an entrepreneur. And how, what you're wanting to share and why you're wanting to share it. Cause all that energy is going to draw in either higher vibration or lower vibration. And so knowing our intentions with that is so important, cause it'll make you or break you, right? So I love it for you. So I feel like your. Your energies that you're feeling, I kind of feel like you're like, yeah, I feel like I need to shift away from that. I don't feel like there's a future there and I would like to try this and I feel that's supported uh with the entrepreneurship. So. There you go. I love it. Even if you have to do like a part-time job, something to fund your entrepreneurship. Let it make sure that it's your heart drawing you to what you wanna be an entrepreneur around. And that it's not your mind and, you know, money-making, it's all only money-making, it's only. Success, it's how I'm gonna define myself, blah, blah, like, get out of the uh head, get into the heart. How do I uniquely wanna share? This love in my heart with the world. How do I wanna impact the world, right? And when you go about it that way, then that that energy automatically matches that higher vibration, right? When our why is that, when our why is. Lower vibrational, trying to meet expectations of abundance and this and that and whatever. That's lower vibration. That's just gonna be, right? So hopefully that makes sense, XO. I love it for you and thank you again for your question and many blessings. Alright, everybody. Well, that is it for tonight. I will be back tomorrow in a little over twelve hours. At eleven AM mountain time, so I shall return uh one more day. Can't believe it's already almost Sunday morning. So um. Thank you guys again for your patience and getting to your readings, all your love, all your support, all the thumbs up. It helps spread the zen love. And um until I see you again, remember every second of every day of our lives. We truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the mother and the father of all things, our creator. And of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, hang in there, take care of yourself, much love and have fun. We'll see you soon.